Call me to order, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No intro music tonight.
Uh, this is an open meeting, the Stewart Nebraska governing body. The city of Stewart has by for the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in meeting room. Each citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speaker card to the clerk. Presenter shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall be determined by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Stewart deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rules.
Kayler.
Here.
Coulterman.
Here.
Streisand.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Francis Gatto.
Here.
With a quorum present.
Thank you. Uh, we have two items this evening to make up the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Second? Motion and second is any discussion. Saying no, register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, uh, under administrative items, you have a presentation and acceptance of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual audit.
So, we have.
Almost knocked the chair over.
Tackling his chair. Um, we have Tracy Cannon online with us tonight. Uh, I think everyone should have inside of your packet, online will be the actual audit document. And then you are also given our benchmarking document. And so Tracy will be on the phone, uh, if we have any questions, so we don't just yell them across the room. Tracy can't hear us, Derek will relay the question back to Tracy over at the computer, but we should have good audio in the room to be able to hear Tracy. Um, and so I will turn it over to Tracy.
Thanks, Derek. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess I just want to first start off by saying that the audit went really smooth. Um, Cindy, Greg, and staff did great at getting us the information that we needed. Um, and with that, we did issue an unmodified opinion, uh, meaning that the financial statements present fairly. Uh, we don't touch too much on the audit report, uh, but in there, it does provide some good information that kind of outlines what our responsibilities are as auditors and then what the management's responsibilities are. Um, but the thing that we focus on is this benchmarking. We kind of take the financial statements and break it down into twelve key topics. The first thing that I just kind of wanted to point out, the valuation and the valuation per capita is just kind of something, um, that we look at and compare, um, where you're at compared to the average. Um, the valuation did increase from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, to six hundred and seventy-one million. Um, it's eighty-seven thousand eight hundred per capita, um, which exceeds the average of eighty-two thousand. Um, so, uh, one of the things that we look at in the financial statements is your unrestricted net position to total net position. Um, the recommended column is, um, thirty-five percent for government-wide, um, twenty-five percent for governmental, and then forty percent for business-type activities. Um, you guys are a little bit below some of those recommendations, but it's because you invest heavily into your capital assets. Um, so a large portion of your net position is your investment in capital assets after debt. Um, number two is your top sources of revenue. So your sales tax is your main source of, of revenue that's coming in. It did decrease from last year, but it's still up from the previous year, so you can see from twenty-twenty, um, how that has increased. Um, the next one is the property taxes, uh, so as the valuation's gone up, your, um, per capita, um, it has also gone up, which you've maintained the same levy rate that you'll see on the next page. Um, your state allocation, that's kind of driven by number three, your highway allocation and municipal equalization. Um, the municipal equalization is kind of driven by your levy rate and then also your valuation per capita. And then your grants and then your franchise tax are also top sources of revenue. And then number three, as I said, the highway allocation and municipal equalization is at that state allocation. Um, number four is your governmental expenditures, um, we exclude any capital outlay and debt. And that recommended column, I won't focus too much on that, um, that's more of an average on other municipalities of your size, but it's going to vary so much on, you know, what's important to each municipality, so I focus more on the historical numbers. Um, for the most part, it's been fairly consistent, some small increases. Um, the pools, um, costs have gone up per capita. Um, library went down this year, but is up from prior years. Um, the golf had a pretty big increase this year in the, the senior center, but for the most part, they're, um, pretty consistent. Um, number five, your governmental debt to your valuation, we like to see that at less than five percent, um, and you're at point six-three percent. Um, the next page. Um, number six is your unassigned fund balance to your general fund expenditures. We like to see that at around, um, thirty percent, and you're above that at forty percent for this year, prior year was fifty-three percent. Number seven is your months in street cash reserve. We like to see around twelve months, and you're right there at eleven point nine. Um, as I mentioned earlier, for number eight, your levy rate, um, has stayed the same, um, for a couple of years, and it is, um, quite a bit lower than the average. Um, number nine is your debt, or your, sorry, your depreciation compared to the original cost. Um, we like to see it above thirty-five percent, um, you're above that in both the governmental and the business-type activities. And I just kind of want to point out that those numbers don't include the projects that are going on right now, um, that you haven't finished. Um, for this year in the governmental activities, you put in about a million dollars worth of capital outlay, um, plus, um, seven million of construction in progress, um, for the governmental funds. And then the business-type activities, um, you've contributed, uh, nine hundred and eighty thousand for additions, plus four point eight million that's in construction in progress. Um, number ten is the operating income to total operating revenue for the enterprise funds. So we like to see around fifteen percent. Um, the electric rate is at seven point five-eight, um, and I think a lot of that's driven by the franchise fees. So if you, um, uh, factor out the franchise fees, it would be around seventeen point eight percent. So then that would be above the recommended. Um, the water and sewer, um, there's quite a bit of debt, so you almost need those higher percentages. Um, as you look at number eleven, where it's the debt coverage ratio, uh, those numbers are a little higher than, than the average. But like I said, as long as you've got the operating income to help support that. And then number twelve is your cash, um, within the general fund, we like to see six months of operating expenses outside and, you know, cash reserves in the general fund, uh, so that would be about, um, two point eight million. You've got three point one in cash reserves that are unassigned. And then the business-type activities, um, the operating again is going to be six months of operating expenditures. The restricted, I believe that's all for debt service, and then the replacement, um, at three point, three million. Um, so the total business-type activities cash that we would like to see is around, you know, fifteen million. You're at eight, but like I said earlier, um, you've got a lot that's invested in the capital outlay. Um, so next year, that replacement cost, um, will probably go down. And then as debt's getting paid down, that, um, changes also, so we don't really see any, um, restrictions there with the cash. And so that kind of summarizes the benchmarking. Anybody have any questions on that?
Looking around the room currently, I don't see any. I'll just, uh, remind people, as, as Tracy noted on the governmental expenses in four, that those are just recommended benchmarks, kind of looking at other communities. For instance, you can look at our, our situation with Gulf. Gulf continues to grow in regards to, uh, the amount of revenue that we're generating, and as we always churn, we're trying to put that money back in, so we end up having more expenses in Gulf, so things like that. It just really is dependent upon each department, so if you had questions on those, I'd recommend going back and like looking through the budget that we approved, uh, for the prior year and the expenses that are associated with these numbers. Uh, and I'll give you an outlook of like what we were doing, because sometimes that will give you a better relay of that, um, you know, just because we're low on administration doesn't mean they're taking money away from me and giving it to Cody and Dan over at the golf course. But they might like that, but never know. So, any other questions on the benchmarking portion of it? Yes, Matt?
I, I have a question, um, Derek, uh, on the recommended values, um, how many, how many different communities does AM, AMGL compare us to? And, and how, how is that, how is that, um, how are those figures, um, arrived sort of?
So, um, we look at, um, both the municipalities that we do and the municipalities that are done, um, by other auditors. Uh, we just kind of pull the audit reports from this, um, state's website, and, um, we just kind of average them. So you're within the population group of under ten thousand. Does that help the answer?
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly the answer I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions on the benchmarking? I see no hands, Tracy.
Okay, um, I guess we usually don't go too much into the financial statements themselves, um, just because we, you know, kind of focus on the, uh, those twelve areas, but, um, because you brought up number four and looking at that, um, if you go to page fifteen of the financial statements, um, it kind of gives your, um, expenses by, by function. So you've got your general government, the economic development, you know, public safety, uh, public works, um, environment and leisure. And so it's got those expenditures, and then it's got your charges for services by those, um, different, um, um, functions, and then your operating grants. And if you flip over to the next page, um, down below is where we list out like the property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, sales tax, um, those items. So you can see the, the deficits up at the top, um, and that kind of just shows how much of your property taxes, sales tax, are going for those, toward those items, um, such as your environment and leisure, public safety, those kind of things.
Thanks, Tracy. Any, anything else you want to cover or any other questions for Tracy before we let her go? Going once, going twice, sold Tracy, you're off the hook. Thank you so much, and thank you to NGL and all the work that you guys do. Um, we'll be in touch, and the audit's already off and running, so it's, it's off to the state auditors, so we're in good shape. So, thank you again, and thank you to your whole team that came down, and we'll finish up here, so you're good to go.
Sorry, very thank you.
I can answer any other particular questions you have in regards to the audit. I will say again, on behalf of, we have Sydney Golden here, our finance director, um, she led the team on this one, uh, and probably corralled me on a few things that I need to get done for it, but, um, Julie and Kirsten, um, Maddie was around for a little bit of it, and obviously Dana, Derek, myself, um, did our best to help Sydney out as she led those efforts. Probably the fastest audit we'd ever had. I mean, it was like really quick. They do a really good job of digitizing everything, asking for stuff in advance, and so all those hours and labored hours of just sitting in and asking for receipt after receipt after receipt, all that stuff is scanned in and identified ahead of time, and then they're just going through it, and then when they find something, they want to go look at it, they'll go grab it individually. But, uh, that whole crew, especially Julie and Sydney, they're just pros at what they do, uh, and so I can't speak highly enough of their efforts. Clear back in like November, so we were kind of late in the game in getting this presented to you, but, um, they really did a great job. So thank you, Sydney, to you and your staff. Any other questions? Matt?
How many, how many years have we worked with AMGL on the audits?
I want to say it's been.
Two thousand seventeen.
Eight, so basically every year I've been here, I presented one that was done by GBE, and then, um, we have two more. I believe when we were looking at their contract today, we have two more with AMGL based on the contract. And so at that point, both Sydney and I agreed that we probably need to go out and look and just get another fresh set of eyes. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't go with an AMGL, but we definitely do need to go out and put it out for bid and talk to other vendors and stuff, and just kind of see what's out there at least, do our due diligence. You can get too.
Comfortable.
Too comfortable.
Yeah.
And so it's like, huh, it's okay, somebody else takes a look at it, might put a little bit more work into it for us on the front end till they get used to us, but, um, there's nothing wrong with having another set of eyes and stuff. As any good professional will do, either it's an architect, a lawyer, an engineer, where's Mike at? There he is. If you give any other one of those professional trades an opportunity to look at something, they'll find something. They'll just see it in a different light, so we're okay with that, but, um, when we get to that discussion, we'll bring something forth to the council so we can put it out to see what else is out there. We may still go back to NGL, I'm sure they'll want to put a bid in and do it again, but we're in good shape. Hopefully by then, our casel system will be far more operational than it is at the moment. It's in good shape, but we'll be pretty dangerous by that point with our financials and, um, the kind of level of, uh, reporting and documentation, other things that we're doing that we weren't doing before when we started with AMGL.
There is something to be said about using a firm that has a lot of, a lot of experience, because they've seen a lot of other communities, not, not just pulling up other audits, but actually they've gone through other communities' books so that they have a perspective that, um, I felt was valuable, and we made the transition to them, um, because they're able to, um, you know, they're. I don't, recommendation, I guess maybe too strong of a word, but given their, their experience, they can guide us in ways that maybe someone else couldn't, just because they, they can tell us what the trends are, what other communities are at, and, and, and they would understand. Like, she made the point about, well, you might be a little low in some area as well as because we maybe invest more heavily in assets and, and something, but understanding with that, with their experience and understanding the context and, and know what the numbers mean and, and, because without the context, sometimes the numbers can be misleading, especially if they don't, aren't, aren't understood in the proper context, so. With that, any other questions? Would, would you like a motion to approve the? Yeah, yeah, we need a motion to accept the report. I, I need a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Alright, we motion in a second, any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, item two, we have a couple items related to the Worthman Boulevard Extension Project. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, so the first item, item two A, this is for construction services for the project to extend Worthman Boulevard. This is to the west end of the, uh, existing rail campus out near the Karanda property. The services amount to, um, sixteen hundred and fifty-four hours. Contract about, the agreement, uh, proposed here is two hundred and fifty-two thousand and fifty dollars. Represents about seven point four percent of the estimated contract, uh, value. And, uh, so, um, with that, I certainly would ask, uh, for council approval of the agreement with Schemmer, the design engineer of this project, for construction services, inspections, staking, daily logs, uh, testing, items like that.
And I'll just remind the council, uh, the extension of Worthman Boulevard is part of a leveraged project that we're working with. Uh, we approved the CDBG grant contracts to leverage over a million dollars, uh, to help pay for this project. And we also have, uh, an EOP grant coming to us from NDOT, it will also provide, Jonathan, what's the number I'm picking up?
Five hundred and eighty.
Eighty, I think it's five hundred and eighty thousand more to this project, so. A great leveraged project with our matching funds, uh, and, uh, our dairy project coming in as the leverage and on the economic development side, and so. Gets a bunch of lots open for us to also sell off that are developable, and so, pretty good for us, but all of this mingles together in how we're going to end up paying for it and how we utilize it.
So Mike, is unclear, the first item you want them to consider is the, is two A, consideration of an agreement in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand and fifty dollars for construction engineering services provided by the Schemmer Associates during the construction of the, of the project.
That is correct, yes.
Any further questions or comments, or is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Your motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And then Mike, going to talk about B, consideration to accept the bid documents and authorization to advertise for public bid?
Yes, so this item two B is for the actual public bidding for the construction of that same Worthman Boulevard extension, um, that we just approved the, uh, engineering services for. The estimated contract amount, the engineer's estimate, is three million, three hundred and ninety thousand and thirty-five dollars. Uh, two hundred and seventeen-page, uh, contract for, uh, the bidder. Uh, we do have a one-page construction estimate, two-page construction estimate that was provided in your packet and the plan set itself. So with that, I would, uh, that we plan to start advertisement on the ninth of April, uh, three weeks in a row. We would propose to have a bid opening at City Hall on the, uh, twenty-ninth of April.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments on item two B? Bring your due motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Your motion in a second, is any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And Mike, we got item on number three, related to the Worthman Boulevard Water Main Phase Two project.
Thank you, so this first item is for the, uh, construction services for the Water Main project. The Water Main project is related to the Worthman Boulevard extension. Uh, it will, however, uh, continue on to, uh, Walker Road, uh, in the northwest corner of the rail campus. Uh, we have a future third phase that will actually be boring underneath Walker Road and BNSF. That project is just starting design, uh, that should complete that loop. Uh, this is for the long-term, uh, provision of water throughout the entire rail campus. Obviously, it would make, um, a big contribution towards the, the dairy operation. So this particular contract with the Schemmer Associates, uh, agreement in value of ninety-seven thousand one sixty represents an estimated six hundred and eight hours of, um, construction services, uh, a lot of staking, uh, inspection during construction, and testing and items like that. So with that, I seek council approval for this agreement with the Schemmer Associates.
Alright, thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council on item three A? Will you entertain a motion?
We have to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Thank you, and three B, consideration to accept the bid documents and authorization to advertise for public bid?
So similar to the Worthman Boulevard extension, this is a related project, we adopt the same bidding dates. Um, so we, we hope there's some, um, um, between the contractors for both projects, uh, similar subcontractors for the utility work, it's a possibility, not necessarily. Uh, so we do project to advertise starting on April ninth with council approval. Advertise, uh, starting on April ninth for three weeks, and then a bid opening at City Council on April twenty-ninth. Uh, estimated cost of this project, construction cost, is one million, two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, you have a single-page cost estimate included in your packet. So with that, um, I seek council approval for advertising this project.
Alright, so item three B, any questions or comments from the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Your motion in a second, is any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Alright, item four, consideration of a change order in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents to the construction contract with general excavating for the Bradford Street Storm Improvement Project.
Yeah, thank you. This work was, uh, completed, uh, in, uh, January, February. Um, this represents, um, a water service line for two forty-seven North Eighth Street, the corner of, southwest corner of Eighth and Bradford. Uh, their four-inch, uh, sanitary, old clean sanitary service was, um, eclipsed by the trench for the thirty-six-inch Water Main that went from Tenth Street up to Sixth Street unknowingly. We checked the, uh, the logs of the inspector at the time, we discussed with the excavator operator that was on the machine at the time. Uh, nobody had seen or reported this main, uh, this, uh, service, uh, disturbed or cut through, uh, last July, but indeed we did. Best we can tell is that, um, the gravel that's used for the bedding of the thirty-six-inch pipe essentially accepted, uh, the sewage from this household for a number of months, you know, that period of six, seven months, until the temperatures got so cold and froze, and then stopped the line. So there was some, uh, backup in that particular house at two forty-seven North Eighth Street. Um, so this, uh, um, uh, item here, the change order amount for fifteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents, this represents, had we known that it existed at the time, this was the identical cost would have been to re-bump that line beneath, uh, the thirty-six-inch storm sewer and reconnect it with, uh, the manhole that is partially up the alley between Eighth and Ninth Street. It is a little bit unusual, standard nowadays is to have a sanitary sewer on either side of the street, maybe down the middle of the street, and all the service lines drop into it. Unfortunately, in this area of towns, very old, service lines go in all different directions, down easements, side yards. They find a sanitary main some way somehow. This in particular is partially down the alley, so it's a very convoluted path, and so very difficult to, uh, found, uh, in advance. So, um, this was fixed, the, the contract, uh, contractor adhered to the prices used on an earlier similar, um, change order that we had for Coach Calhoun's property at, um, on Bradford. And, uh, so I ask, uh, council approval for this change order, um, for general excavating in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council on item four? Otherwise, you entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Gatto, Kayler, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
Item five, consideration of a professional services agreement with Olson Incorporated for construction engineering services for the five hundred thousand gallon water tower project. Mike?
Thank you, so primarily this agreement here is for, um, the amount of inspection that we would expect during the coating of the existing water, or the new water tower, that coating had been halted, uh, last year. Uh, we, uh, reached an agreement with the, uh, tank manufacturer who's responsible for the coating to remove the entire exterior coating, sandblasting it off, reapplying three coats. Uh, this time through, the previous time, we had part-time inspection, uh, now we're requesting, uh, full-time inspect, inspection. Contract represents seven hundred and thirty-five hours, uh, thirty-five is office work, seven hundred hours of inspection on site represents roughly fourteen weeks of inspection, uh, at six days a week. Uh, that would take us roughly through July fifteenth. We do believe the tank will be completed prior to July fourth, of course, with delays like we've seen today and tomorrow with the weather and wind, um, potentially at extent, the, um, uh, Olson, the inspector, would only come out of the days that the sandblasting or painting operations were active. Uh, so this is a time and materials not to exceed cost. And so if, uh, if we, actually, we did run to the end of the contract, the contracted amount, we would seek, uh, an amendment to this agreement. Uh, we're fairly. We're fairly confident they can complete the tank in this period of time. The tank is, is actually containment was raised yesterday. Except for the wind and the weather, they should be able to start on Thursday. So this first two coats, the crew that's on site, they should be able to, in four weeks of coating, complete those two coats. And we anticipate the, the final coat on the outside to take roughly eight weeks. And then hopefully, we should still have three, four weeks of float time before the Fourth of July, but in windy Nebraska, that can change rapidly. So with your approval, seek approval for this agreement with Olson, the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand and forty-five dollars.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council on item five?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Alright. Item six, update on the Volunteer Emergency Responder Incentive Program. Greg?
Yes, there is an incentive program that was authorized by the state a number of years back. Each year, a given performance standard is set pursuant to state statute. That is performed and kept track of by the volunteer fire department. They submit that list. Traditionally, under our old ordinance, they submitted it to us. We would ultimately approve it, and then the city clerk would send that on to the State Department of Revenue, and then the qualifying volunteer fire department members would be able to get a tax incentive based on that from the state. We got close on it in the transition one year, with multiple transitions going on, both at City Hall and the fire department. And we felt like in talking to Chief Mifflin, that we needed to relook at this and just make it more efficient. And so we relooked at the statutory requirements, and then we talked to Chief Mifflin, and we came up with the fact that we were going to reappoint, and he, I believe, requested that he will be the appointed certified certification administrator. That's the technical term by state law in item B here, so we'll make that a formal appointment. They will send the list to us. We'll keep it on hand and have it to you, but we're not gonna wait around to formally approve it with City Council, because, let's just be honest, we're looking at a list that we don't.
And ain't much.
Yeah, it's just a list and there's numbers next to it. And it's not required. There's no requirement that the council approve it. It was just the way that the city wrote it at the time we adopted it. And then Chief Mifflin will send that on. So we will receive it. We can give it to you, and we'll send it out. It'd probably be an email as soon as we receive it, so you can just look it over and stuff. But by taking those formalities out, it makes it much more robust that we can get it into the Department of Revenue and not have the stampedes that we've seen in the past, and so.
It's been close.
Yeah, and so, we just think it's more, just making government more efficient and helping out the volunteer fire departments to get this in, in an efficient manner. So it's taken up by the Department of Revenue and available to them when they start doing their taxes.
I'll introduce the ordinance. An ordinance to amend the city of Seward Volunteer Emergency Responder Incentive Program, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with to provide for an effective date in ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title. It designated as ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with that short rule?
Some.
Your motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as right?
Let's move.
Second.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine be finally passed and adopted. Please register your vote. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
We will, no matter what pursuant state statute, have to appoint the named certified administrator. That is required. And so in speaking with Chief Mifflin and in the way we directed the ordinance, that person that we've designated at this time is Chief Mifflin. So that is what we have for us.
So item six B, consideration to appoint Taylor Mifflin, fire chief, as the certification administrator of the Seward Volunteer Emergency Incentive Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Your motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Right, item seven, consideration to adopt the revised section five oh four policy related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Greg?
Yes, Derek and myself have continued to work on our ADA transition plan and other items in relation to those federal and state requirements that we have to have. They're usually always part of any sort of grant performance process. And so Derek has done his due diligence to help create an updated five oh four plan, which is really the hierarchy of all of those elements. It talks about your transition plan. It talks about your ultimate ADA products and things like that, and how we perform those, who we look through, who would help look those kind of things over. We haven't touched this since, I believe, since two thousand thirteen. And so it's just in due for a little bit of a revamp. Derek went through and looked at other plans in other communities that are more up to date with the state requirements and federal requirements. It created a pretty robust, quality plan that we feel comfortable, that we can execute on again. With things like our sidewalk program, building of our new buildings at the Wellness Center, renovation projects that we have going on at the Civic Center. ADA is at the forefront of a lot of the things we think about now, and so we want to continue to implement that into the future, so.
When was the last time ADA was here for not, you know?
I want to, for some reason, oh nine is ringing in my ears.
I recall twenty twelve, so.
But it might be twenty twelve.
Okay. So that's item number seven, any questions or comments, Greg? Will you entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Item eight, items related to pool staffing, Greg?
Yeah, this was kind of a quick one, and I apologize that we didn't even have time really to take this one to the Personnel, Finance, and Audit Committee. I think when we looked at the update, I think, and we have our members here, so council member Miller, help me if I'm mistaken. I think when we looked at the adoption of the Nebraska minimum wage law that went into effect, we had a discussion about a few positions that we had at the city. We made a few changes, and a few we said, hey, let's leave them alone, because as we've probably seen in the discussion online lately, the city of Seward is not subject to the state of Nebraska minimum wage laws. We are subject to the federal minimum wage law, which I believe is like seven and a quarter. And so we have positions all the way down to swim aid that my kid was doing last year, where he was trying to figure out why he was getting paid just over seven dollars an hour. And I had that explanation with him, but that's what gives us the ability to do that in different positions. So as we had that discussion, the encouragement back from the Personnel, Finance, and Audit Committee at that time was, let's let the market dictate. If you're struggling to fill these positions, and they're essential positions, perform the expected services or items that we perform at the city of Seward, come back to us when you get to those points, as long as we don't get to an emergency point, and we will continue to relook at these. So we've kind of monitored those since that change over. As you're well aware, the minimum wage as of January first moved to, I believe, thirteen fifty. And so we've seen a lot of upward mobility in a lot of different positions around, especially positions that are utilized by magically our summer high school and college-age students. And so, working with Jamie Fields, our new rec director, or assistant rec director, yes, we've changed titles lately. We were noticing that we were just not getting the level of, of lifeguards to apply, especially with the Wellness Center opening up, which we thought would be more of a interesting opportunity for kids and an alternative to scalding out in the sun through the summer unless they really like working on their cans. And so in council with her and Lori and Vicky down at the pool, at Douting Pool, the recommendation was, is we need to start being competitive because we are losing them to the market. The kids are just reporting. We're going to other pools, they're paying more, and we're going to other jobs that are paying more. And so this equates to approximately, I believe, about, I don't know how to write this for me, because I don't have, I don't want to flip through eight hundred pages right at this moment, but about a two dollar an hour raise, and it puts us right at the state minimum wage. We believe this will make us competitive, and we've already heard from a few that at this one, especially at the Wellness Center, we'll be able to hit the lifeguarding numbers that we want to hit for family swim time in different private events and stuff like that, where we'll only have a lifeguard on duty.
What, what is the state minimum wage now?
Thirteen fifty, and it's gonna continue to go up unless they change something. So it's.
Fifteen next year.
It goes to what?
Fifteen.
Well, I estimated in the legislature today, and they're trying to put the brakes on it. And that did advance, but it probably won't advance the next time.
But yeah, the hard part is that I think since this was a voter-approved item, they need a significant number of votes in the legislature to curb
Supermajority.
The will of the people. So, this, again, it was a known reaction to setting a law like this into place, that this was gonna continue to provide upward pressures, good, bad, or otherwise, to be competitive on these, because these kids are smart. They know where to go. They know how to look up the information about what people are paying in different jobs. And so they are looking for what they can do. Costs are going up. They're, we've got smart kids in Seward, say that. And so we also increased, just keep, keep the wage comparability between each one. They're approximately a dollar. We did, the office staff, so these are the kids that are just sitting at the front, taking your money or checking you in. We're not having a particular issue with them, so we did increase them just marginally. Lifeguards is definitively where it's of an issue. The other push on this one was also when we were looking at the Wellness Center and what we had to be competitive there. The lifeguards were getting paid less than every other position at the Wellness Center, including people that are just sitting at the front desk, checking people in, and it just didn't make sense. We knew we were probably gonna adjust this, but we wanted to make sure that we had understood, and I had a conversation with Jerry Pigsley, our labor attorney, Joel Brazey, and Jamie about making sure we're on top of hours and who's where, so that we're separating out. And we think we're gonna have that separation now, because we have enough interest in just lifeguarding at the Wellness Center, so that we don't turn seasonal or very part-time employees into year-round full-time employees, or, because then you start moving into issues of not so much concern about the minimum wage, obviously, that's not related, but overtime, and then also benefits, and some of those other things that kick in when you start hitting certain hours and certain levels of employment throughout the year. A lot of communities are able to separate these things because they have a YMCA and then a public pool. They share the exact same pool of lifeguards, but you have two different employers, so there's that desegregation. We are continuing to work with like the YMCA, the Fallbrook YMCA, because they're in a similar position where they have the outdoor pool that operates like a traditional municipal in the summer, and then they keep an indoor pool and it's all the same lifeguards. So just understanding how they're staffing and tracking that, so we really stay ahead of it in regards to avoiding issues of overtime and some of those beneficial ones. So that was the impetus for this. We think this will make us competitive based on the context they've made with athletes and other people. Trying to work in some of those ones and see if we can still recruit here while we got time to line up summer employment, so. Joel, anything to add? I think that's.
Okay. We also made these two steps for the Douting Pool employees and stuff, just to make it easier. So for our, you know, parks and rec people that are doing stuff during the summer, the kids out there, it's two steps. The first year, you get a wage. Second year, if you come back, you get a wage. Same thing for lifeguards. Nobody's gonna lose any money with this change, but we're just making it easier, so we're not having to track nine steps that nobody's ever gonna get to.
We, we traditionally.
Either in or max.
Yeah, we're traditionally not gonna have them more than probably four years on a good one, and the ones that don't come back after the first year, we want to reward the ones that are continuing to come back for us, so we want to give them a good bump right away off the bat, so. But as Derek said, we looked through all of it and redouble-checked the numbers. No one, everyone will be making similar or more. There's nobody that'll have a step back.
Any questions or comments on item eight? Eight A is the consideration of an ordinance to amend pay rates for Douting Wellness Center pool staffing. We'll handle that one first. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
An ordinance to provide perennial classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title. It designated as ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, and the stat, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with that short rule?
Second.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as right?
Second.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten be finally passed and adopted. Please register your vote. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
This is our last ordinance for the evening. Only one final motion to make the ordinances part permanent record.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Alright, item eight B, discussion impossible, advocate to reimbursement of lifeguard employees for certification. Greg?
Another item that came up and had discussion with Joel, Jamie, Derek and the mayor ultimately, is the idea of certification costs. So there's a substantial amount of certification costs that are involved, both on CPR training and then the lifeguard training in and of itself, and all the certifications they need. Previously, we did not reimburse the first-time certifications for any of that. So an initial lifeguard that came out, what they did receive was, is they got all of their pool equipment at the end, so their shorts, uniforms, whistle, blah, 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 blah. That was what they were getting, but we were not recouping those. I think it's about a hundred and fifty dollars that makes up those certification costs, and that has to be paid upfront. And so we discussed, well, what's the policy incentive for that? And had a good discussion with Mayor Eichmeyer, and we felt that a good incentive would be that if you pass your certification, then we do reimburse your costs. The risk we take is that you don't, and we invested these costs. We went through all this training with you, and then you don't get certified. Well, then you can't work for us. And so we want to reward the ones that put their nose to the grindstone, do the work that Tasha and others are requiring of them during the training process, and then get certified at the end and take it seriously. We want to reward those lifeguards. And so we're gonna recoup those costs back, because that can be a big hump for students or even their parents in certain situations. And so recoup those costs back and just make sure that we're pushing them to get through and get certified. Recertifications every year, we were already recouping, or reimbursing all those costs, so we would pay for those on recertifications. If you're already with us for a season and were certified, the next season, we were paying and covering all those costs. So this would be a slight adjustment to that. It's not written anywhere. We may come back and have a more formal one later, but as another incentive to help out recruiting lifeguards this year, we think this is a good step forward on that. And so that's the policy recommendation that we would have, if you're okay with it. Take any questions?
Sounds good to me.
Is any further discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Scott Taylor Colterman Miller Singleton Streisand Morgan seven zero.
Item nine, update on Wellness Center. Welcome, Joel. Anything new this week?
What's that?
Anything new this week?
Quiet, boring, nothing going on.
Hanging out a little bit. Working from home in.
Wait, what?
My new home.
My new home.
There you go.
Yeah, obviously, it was, it was a good day on Sunday. Thank you for those that could be there. That was a huge ribbon-cutting event, obviously, and there was, until four-thirty, there was a lot of people in the building. Good buzz, good energy, people that were excited to be there. So that was a fun event. The last two days have been good. We've been signing people up left and right, helping people get, be able to do that and get their accounts and everything going. We've had a consistent group that's been in there. We've had, we have our group that are ready right at five AM to come in and use a weight room, use a pool. And then today, we finally had a few more mid to late morning that came in, pool time, you know, just work. Uh, pool time, you know, just workout, and then, we've always had someone in, in the, in the weight room, around the track, in the gym, and in the pool, all the time. And then both days, uh, right at three thirty, we had kids coming in right after school and using all of the parts, which is what we intended it for. Yeah, some of them are just checking it out for the first time, coming with a parent, just seeing what it's all about. But we have kids in there shooting hoops, just having fun, burning off some energy and things like that. So we have a place for that, checking out the weight room, seeing how that's going. And then last night, we had some family pool time. Which right now, because most of our lifeguards that are available right now, we can't get to the summer. Uh, we have to have where a parent needs to be in there with them, because we don't have a lifeguard on duty. And so that went well last night. A lot of people having fun. I only had to kick a couple people off the s- uh, starting blocks that were jumping off and doing cannonballs. And told them that's not exactly what the starting blocks are intended for, so. Um, there were adults in there with them.
Wait, was it yours? Was that your thing?
There may be video evidence.
Not a Joel kicking him out.
Oh, nice.
So, and there were some that were using the blocks to dive off of and swim like you normally would. That was okay, so. Um, we ju- we've had a good flow in the building the last two days. We're probably up to a total of nine hundred, um, people that are, are members, and that includes fan, you know, that's everybody that's part of the families and things like that. So that's the total number. And so that's not in the, the number of family memberships, but we keep gaining more. Um, and it's, it, it's been good. It's been a long last week, um, because a lot of things had to be finished up there, and then a long weekend. But Jamie, uh, is doing a great job, staff. Tom Vaggard is doing a tremendous job in the building, and, uh, Sam Patterson is, is doing a great job getting the child watch going, and that has picked up. Today, we had a few people in there. And so that will just keep getting better and better as we promote that more. Jamie and I are both, we both decided that we're gonna share this week the opening and closing, because all of our employees are obviously brand-new up there, and, and so one of us is always there right away at a little before five to help out that group, to see how that goes, and when it closes at nine. So we're spending a lot of time up there this week, which we understood. Um, it might have been a poor decision to decide to do the close last night and the opening this morning, but, uh, survived. Um, but we're doing that just because of all, all of our employees are new. They're doing a tremendous job as well. Our part-time, our, our college kids, I've been really impressed with their demeanor and how they're relating with all of the people that come in. Uh, there was one instance where there was an unhappy person that some communication with her slipped through the cracks for various reasons. Uh, not necessarily anybody's fault, but it happened, and she was not happy, and one of the college kids had to take the brunt of it.